I have thirty-two slides, so I don't know.
All right.
Can you just give us the finger puppet?
Okay, could you cut it down to sixteen slides?
Can you do those slides in thirty seconds? How can we do that?
Did you guys hear they saved our building?
They saved our building?
Yeah, we had another close call about a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago, where we had a, actually, Chanhassan Department dropped off some batteries.
Those damn batteries.
It was those dangerous lithium ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Matt, we're gonna get going. All right, so we are gonna open the work session portion of this county board meeting with environmental center planning update.
All right, well, good afternoon. I wasn't gonna say good morning, but good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Brad Hansel, Environmental Services Department Manager, and I also have Bill Fokes, our Environmental Center Supervisor here. Here today to talk to you about our Environmental Center planning efforts. So something, I'll just run through this really quick. It would be touching on EC participation and material managed, current operational challenges, a recap of our future services and facility plan that was completed last year, site analysis, what has been considered to address these operational challenges, pros and cons to each option, and then staff recommendation and next steps. And if we have time at the end, I'll give a brief overview of the solid waste service fee that the county collects. So we'll start with EC participation rates. So as you can see by this graph, since opening the building in two thousand and two, we've seen a steady increase in participation. We did have a short reprieve from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty due to the elimination of yard waste that we collected at the facility, as well as the pandemic, we were closed for a three-month time period. Since the pandemic, we have seen that trend continue to go upward, mainly due to population growth and then cardboard recycling. You know, since the pandemic, before the pandemic, the really, the shift in purchasing to kind of the Amazon effect and cardboard generation. So I, as I mentioned on the previous slide, we eliminated yard waste from the Environmental Center in twenty nineteen. The county board made that decision, it was based on the amount of material that was being dropped off at the Environmental Center, the traffic that we were seeing because of the yard waste, the lack of space to manage that material, and then the need to really focus on household hazardous waste and problem materials. We were seeing roughly forty percent of our customers were coming in with just yard waste, so that, we had to address that. The county looked at citing another yard waste site, and a decision was made to not go that route and just encourage residents to utilize the many municipal sites and private compost sites around the area. So this map shows those sites. The green dot represents year-round municipal compost sites in those four cities, and those are for those city residents to utilize. The lighter blue dots are seasonal sites or drop-off events. And then the darker color is private compost sites that are open year-round for all residents to use. Private waste tellers also offer seasonal curbside collection for a cost to their customers as well. So just wanted to show you those options available for yard waste. Along with participation volumes increasing, we also see increase with material volumes. In twenty twenty-four, we collected and shipped over three million pounds of materials through the Environmental Center. Lots of materials flowing through the facility. Couple items to note, material categories to note is electronics, we're seeing a rise in electronics, and then cardboard. We keep coming back to this cardboard theme. So cardboard in twenty twenty-four, so we, we served just shy of forty thousand vehicles in twenty twenty-four. Of that number, roughly forty percent brought in cardboard and recycling. And then to break it down even further, out of that forty thousand, roughly twenty percent were cardboard-only loads that were brought to the Environmental Center, for a total of just over four hundred thousand pounds of cardboard. That amount collected increased from twenty-three to twenty-four by six percent, or just over twenty thousand pounds, and we're expecting that to continue to see that trend to continue in the future. The cost to manage the cardboard at the EC was just over twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four, and that is only for the shipment and recycling of the material that does not cover any overhead costs, staffing, building costs, et cetera. So staff sat down and we discussed, you know, what are our current operational challenges? It really, it kind of revolves around high volume of participants on these materials. Peak participation times, which causes traffic backups on the PV circle, traffic congestion and flow, and then this material storage, mainly outdoor storage for these larger items, the management of those materials and the associated disposal costs. In twenty twenty-three, staff, the county decided to conduct a future services and facility plan. The reason for the study was to meet the increased service needs for our residents, to examine our operational processes, extend the life of the current Environmental Center, and then plan for the future. So we contracted with Brinsen-McDonald Waste Management Engineering Firm to assess the current service levels, future trends, and options for the county. The plan was completed in twenty twenty-four, and we presented that plan along with recommendation, recommendations to the board at the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four work session. So some of those planned recommendations include there was five different steps that Brinsen-McDonald recommended. The first one was, you know, fairly simple one, but necessary one is to implement operational improvements for the safe handling of our hazardous waste, the bulking raw materials, so gasoline, oil, those items that were bulking, and then lithium-ion batteries. And those improvements were all made in twenty twenty-four. Step two was to develop a plan to discontinue the acceptance of recyclable materials and cardboard. When we discussed this with the board in twenty twenty-four, it was decided that we weren't gonna go down this path and do this step. We're gonna continue to accept the materials and just try to provide other resources for residents to try to drive some of that material away from the Environmental Center. Step three was to consider recommended EC facility improvements, mainly for the traffic flow, and I'll get into those further as we get into the presentation. Step four was to host an additional special waste collection event on the western side of the county. We currently host three events, one in Watertown Township, one in Cologne, and one in Hollywood Township. We're not seeing an increase in participation at those events, it's really plateaued. So we'll continue to evaluate that one, and if there is a need in the future, you know, we'll look at adding a fourth special waste collection event. And then step five, reevaluate the need for a new facility in the future, you know, three-to-five-year timeline, you know, and this is really based on the facility's physical condition and program growth assumptions. So the site analysis, so nine potential solutions were considered by staff to address the operational challenges that we've identified. These options were selected based on recommendations from the plan, from prior discussions with the county board, and county leader, input from county leadership. We evaluated the pros and cons and challenges to each of these options, and I'll get into each option as we move through this presentation. Staff also met with the City of Chaska on two separate occasions to look at our, the site constraints, so really the property of the Environmental Center. The property that we have is roughly five, just over five acres. Current footprint that we utilize is about one point three acres, and we estimate that there's a potential buildable footprint of about two acres. And as you can see on this slide, there's a lot going on with the property, from, you know, wetlands to wooded, steep slopes and their associated setbacks. There's the property line setbacks, and then there's also railroad setbacks. So we're dealing with quite a few limitations on this site. The first option that we looked at is widening the entrance and correcting the flow of traffic. And this was a recommendation taken from the facility and services plan that Brinsen-McDonald put together. So some of the pros looking at this option would be to correct the flow of traffic, but then also make it easier for staff and residents to access the parking at the facility. The cons and challenges with this option, the proposal from Brinsen-McDonald included eliminating recycling using this option, just to create more space for traffic flow. Then also, they proposed to add a service kiosk to chuck residents in to correct that flow of traffic, and that could potentially put a strain on our staffing at the Environmental Center by dedicating a staff person to that kiosk operations. Then also, there could be a potential pinch point from the household hazardous waste drop-off, so those blue arrows would be the household hazardous waste traffic, and if that gets backed up, that could be a pinch point there. So those are just some current concerns that staff have with this option. The second option that we looked at was an exit road around the building. Once again, this was a recommendation taken from the plan provided by Brinsen-McDonald. Similar pros, correct the flow of traffic, easier access to parking. Some of the cons, challenges, this would be, you know, a costly expense to the county. We reached out to a, to an engineer for an engineer's cost estimate, and the quote that we got back would be ten thousand dollars plus or minus fifty percent for a tabletop estimate to construct something like this, or twenty thousand dollars plus or minus fifty percent for, you know, a field verified, come out and survey and, and so, you know, if that's a path that we want to go down in the future, there would be a cost to get that, you know, the engineer's cost estimate for this. Another challenge is city setback requirements. As I showed in that previous slide, there's the wetland and the wooded, steep slope considerations. This option also included discontinuing recycling to create more space for traffic flow. This could create a pinch point at the rear receiving area, where we accept appliances and other bulky items. And then there's also stormwater management implications that could, would come into effect. The third option, this was one that the county board requested staff explore. So that's adding a second access to going out to PV Road. Once again, would correct the flow of traffic and make it easier for parking. Some of the challenges or cons, this area acts as a flow path for Lake Hazeltine. So this, there would be definitely a high cost associated with this option, so engineering, the construction, and wetland mitigation costs. In conversations with the City of Chaska, obtaining approval for a second access from the city would be challenging. And then city setback requirements, you know, variance would be required, and making a case could be difficult to the city. And then also, wetland filling is generally not encouraged by the state, city, and county when other options exist. Another option we looked at was additional outside storage. As I mentioned, this is a need. You know, we're always, especially for the cardboard materials. The pros would be added capacity for the materials. Some of the cons, challenges, city requirements, as far as outside storage, they want to see storage in the rear buildings. So currently, the way we have things set up in the back, we don't have a lot of room to add any storage in the rear of the building. If we were allowed to locate storage up front, screen walls must be constructed to match the buildings. We're talking concrete block material, not fencing. And that's if the city would allow us to have storage up front. Also, if we would look at an upfront storage area, we would have to look at setback requirements for the wooded, steep slopes, and then also potentially moving the parking lot, parking spots to access that storage area. Building expansion internal storage. So the pros would be additional space for material storage in the building. The cons, challenges, we really don't need, we don't have a need for internal storage at this point in time. I'm not saying down the road, we might not need internal stor, additional internal storage, but it's more of the, the outdoor storage that's the concern right now. And expanding the warehouse space, which is kind of that, the east side of the building, would reduce our paved area needed for participant and vendor traffic in the back. But then also, there would be the city setback requirements that we would have to look into as well. We also considered an appointment-based system. So, you know, the pros, allows for better planning and reduce wait times for patrons, streamlines operations by ensuring staff is prepared for each appointment, improve traffic flow during peak volume time, traffic times. But the cons, obviously, we all know the cons, it's less convenient for our residents. They could definitely find it cumbersome. Can't just have your drive up, someone wants to pop into the Environmental Center that day, that wouldn't be an option. We might not be able to accommodate last-minute changes, missed appointments can cause downtime, you know, et cetera. You know, it's, there's a lot of cons involved with that one. And I do want to note that if somebody needs to make an appointment with us for, when we're not open, we do accommodate that. So if somebody's moving, they need to drop off some household hazardous waste, we do, you know, accommodate those, those residents at, currently. Another option we looked at is, you know, traffic control enhancements to PV Circle. So this would include cones, so that in the short term, and this is something we currently do when there are backups on the PV Circle. We do set out cones, temporary and/or permanent signage. We do use temporary signage, we have looked at permanent signage on PV Circle. Road striping, currently PV Circle does not have any striping on the road. Concrete median construction, long-term, and then potentially widening the entrance. So the pros to this, obviously, it's very cost-efficient. You know, to put up a couple signs and do some striping on the road, if that could help us with the traffic flow, it's a great option. And it's also supported by the City of Chaska. They would, they said they would even help us with a striping plan to get that laid out. So some of the cons, challenges, you know, if we're routing traffic up into PV Circle, we have three neighbors up into the circle, three other businesses, you know, there could be some impacts to those neighbors. Although most of our backups are probably on a Saturday morning when they're not operational. Semi-trailer access, if a permanent median is installed, could, could be a problem, but there are ways to do the curving on the median so they could drive over it too, so. Cardboard relief, so we talked about, you know, the cardboard that's coming into our facility. So some of the considerations, we had seven different options we looked at for cardboard relief to try to drive away some of that material from our facility, so the one item was add operational days. So currently, we operate a Wednesday-through-Saturday schedule, staff are onsite Tuesday through Saturday. So Tuesday is used for prep for the week, shipping, you know, that's the day we really utilize for getting all those materials out of the facility. So that leaves us with Sunday and Monday. And those are the days that staff are off, because that's, they're, they're two days off. Mondays are also used for shipping as well. Some vendors do come on Mondays when staff are not around to ship materials. So we're not recommending adding any operational days, just due to the schedule. Increased frequency of hauler pickups. We really don't have an issue with turning away residents if they're, you know, for full containers. Occasionally, maybe on the end of a Saturday at noon, on Saturday, we might have to turn away a few customers for cardboard drop-off, but we really aren't seeing that issue as far as adding hauler pickups for those materials. Adding outside hours for cardboard only. We think that doing this would provide communication challenges. If we're allowing people just to come for just cardboard only, we're gonna be seeing household hazardous waste, we're gonna see other items being dropped off. So we don't, that's one item we would, option we would not recommend. An unattended area for after-hours drop-off. Once again, I think, you know, the security risk, dropping off other items, we see, you know, a lot of issues with that, having, you know, after-hours drop-off. Implement additional city drop-off sites. So currently, we work with City of Chanhassan and City of Victoria to have cardboard drop-off sites. That's a service that we pay for, we have an MOU with them to use their site, but we, we manage the material and pay for the material. So our thought would be to look at, you know, other cities, especially on the eastern side of the county, you know, Chaska, Carver, those residents that are bringing that material to the Environmental Center. We also have options, the drop-off sites in Norwood, Cologne, and Mayer, that residents can use for cardboard drop-off in those communities. We've talked about this one before, promote the use of additional curbside carts. Really get that education out to the residents to, to get a second cart, third cart if they need for recycling. And then education, you know, disposal alternatives, talk about these other sites that we have available. Demcon companies accepts cardboard from residents at no charge in Shakopee. And then also just the management of that material, break it down, you know, cut it up, break it down, don't, you know, try to dispose of these big boxes without breaking it down, so. Then the last option we looked at is the operating hours. So our current operating hours, as I mentioned earlier, we operate a Wednesday-through-Saturday schedule. That's twenty-three hours per week, and the hours are listed there. And just for comparison, I put down Scott County's, their facility hours. Current participation by day and by hour. So we collect a lot of data at the Environmental Center, which is really great, so we can really kind of narrow down our participation, where people are coming from, when they're coming. So as you can see in the upper left, those are the Wednesdays, the average EC participants per hour for Wednesdays. So from that two, noon to two o'clock time period, we're seeing roughly fifty percent of that day's participation come during those two hours. And that's mainly because that's our first day we're open during the week, and it's kind of that noon rush, that lunch hour rush too. And then throughout the day, it really tapers off, and then the last hour of the day, we see on average about ten to twelve residents come through that last hour. Thursdays are very similar, with about fifty to fifty-one percent coming during those first two hours, and then tapering down until that last hour of the day. Fridays are consistent throughout the day, that's a good, good pace for staff and the vehicles coming through. And then Saturday is a reversal, so we're not seeing those people coming in from eight to nine in the morning, nine to ten. About ten, ten-thirty, we start seeing that uptick, people rushing in, trying to drop off material. Couple interesting items about Saturdays is that eighty, those eighty participants for that last hour, roughly about forty percent of those people are bringing in cardboard only. So we're seeing these people trying to rush in and bring this cardboard in. And if we can have some alternative sites, maybe we could drop that number down and give them that option, they can go on a Sunday when it's open, you know, on a different, you know, in the evening, to drop off their cardboard. Also, it's very interesting, we don't see people backed up at noon. It's pretty much a clear, clean break, we don't see people waiting to get in and servicing them from noon to twelve-thirty to one o'clock. We don't, we don't see that, so.
Mr. Chair and May?
Yes.
Can you go back one, Brad?
Yes, sir.
The, how late are we open on Saturdays?
Till noon. Oh, sorry, that says AM.
So in your best judgment, or your staff's best judgment, what would happen if we, in the spirit of customer service, what would happen if we were open till two o'clock?
You know, I think, first of all, for staffing, staffing needs, I think we're kind of up to our.
Let's just put that to the side, because I know there's the perspective of us as county and labor, but if we put it in the perspective of a taxpayer, if we were open till two o'clock, in the spirit of customer service, would we get more people in those windows? Have we tried it? Have we tested it?
Commissioner, yeah, I guess, you know, like I said, we're not seeing them line up at noon, we don't have that. But if we did adjust the hours, I don't know if we would see those.
We haven't tested it or piloted it?
We have not tested it.
Great, thanks.
I don't know if people try to get everything done in the morning, so then they can go and have activities. But, no, it has not been tested.
I think one observation, Commissioner, was that folks are getting there because they know they close at noon. If they're gonna close at two.
They'd be getting there at one-thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, but some would say is, you know, these are sporadic hours for somebody that doesn't do it all the time, right? There's the regular hours for us, and I'm not discrediting the staffing side of it. And then if you look at Red Bench, for instance, they found out that if they closed on Monday and Tuesday, they'd have the same amount of sales as if they were open on Monday or Tuesday. People just would pile up on a Wednesday or Friday, or they'd go get their stuff on a Saturday, right? So being open more doesn't necessarily mean more customers, it just means more labor sometimes. But I think it'd be interesting if, again, in the spirit of customer service, if we had a period of time where we tested, are we limiting our service because our primary driver is labor? Or are we open to saying, all right, what's best for the constituents? There's a lot of solutions to get there. Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner. If, if Paul, you're gonna make, maybe you wanna sit up here, I think you're gonna maybe be adding, maybe both of you guys wanna sit at the table and grab the mic. We are filmed or taped, both?
Yeah, Commissioner, you know, I talked about, you know, we do at times, very rare, we do have to turn residents away if we're at max capacity for cardboard. So I don't know if, would that spread out and we would have more people on Saturday, or like we talked about, would it just shift that rush from ten to twelve to, you know, noon to, so. So we're kind, one thing we're recommending is a shift of hours of operation. So at current, you can see here the current hours and then the proposed hours. So really, going back to that last slide, you know, that opening times, we're seeing that mad, that rush at noon. And, you know, part of it's lunch hour. We're thinking, if we can spread out that, that opening time, and, you know, that, that would probably help with some backups for those residents. So looking to go from twelve to seven on Wednesday to a ten to six on Wednesday. Similar to Thursday, from a noon to six to a ten to five, and then Fridays and Saturdays would stay, stay the same. Some of the pros, we're thinking would distribute that traffic at the beginning of the hour, the days, and reducing backups on the PV Circle, addressing some of those periods of low, low activity in the evening. So it's that cost benefit, you know, having, you know, being open for that extra hour for those, you know, low, low amount of customers coming through. Talk about consistency, consistent weekday opening hours, you know, opening at ten during the weekday hours rather than twelve, twelve, and ten, trying to provide a little more consistency. And then ultimately, we're providing an additional two hours of service from twenty-three hours a week to twenty-five hours a week. The cons would be, you know, the reduction of those evening hours. So we're still open till six on Wednesdays, but we would close at five on Thursdays. So that would be one of the, you know, the challenges or the cons with that option. So I guess, you know, so staff recommendations and next steps. So for twenty twenty-five, what staff is proposing is, you know, change those operating hours, which I just showed you. Cardboard relief, so education, you know, talk to our residents, educate our residents, work with the cities to add additional drop-off sites, and then the signage and striping plan on PV Circle. The reason we identify these is we think we can really distribute our, our residents, this is a very cost-effective solution, it's all three of these. There is some cost associated to those drop-off sites at the cities, but overall, compared to creating new roads around the building and doing, this is like, let's try this first and see if we can spread those customers out and try to drive some of that cardboard away from the Environmental Center. We'll still accept it at the Environmental Center, but just try a few of these options. The two-to-three-year plan would be to continue to analyze the traffic flow and expansion options, and then, you know, maybe conduct a median on PV Circle for write-in and write-out if needed. Now, we would work with the City of Chaska on that. And then five, five to fifteen years is continue to look at, you know, the long-term life of the facility, you know, planning for a new site, how that would look. So at this time, it's, welcome any recommended, you know, input from the board or any questions you may have.
Brad, can you go back to that slide where you compare us to Scott County, the number of hours? Currently, how is Scott County doing it on fourteen hours a week?
Bill, can you answer that?
That's a, it's a very good observation, Commissioner. I think, you know, in light of Commissioner Udoman's comment in, in regards to providing customer service to Carver County constituents, this is just an example of how in Carver County, we deem this a high priority, and we've been able to maintain our fast, reliable, and friendly service to the tune of twenty-three hours per week, which is actually, you know, more for a county that doesn't have the population that Scott County has. I think the fact that we're located right in between Chaska and Chanhassan are two most populated cities is a driver for that. But what I will say is, our expansion also includes, this will bump us up to, I believe, actually, what, twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hours per week, so. I think the fact that we're so convenient, we're so close to people, you know, it's, it's, it's just a function of proximity. I think in Scott County, their HHW is, is located in a, in a rural area, it's not located near a highly populated, highly concentrated area. I think that, that might have something to do with it. And I think that if you look at the array of Scott County materials that they take at their facility, they're not taking as many materials as we are too. They're, they're simply not as robust and, and functioning to the capacity that we are in terms of the materials that we're collecting.
How can you trust them, really? When we are, when Commissioner Anderson and I were out there a week or two ago, I know that we brought up the idea of a, a different building altogether. This, sorry, my voice is getting, they made me read that resolution. Which, you know, wouldn't be my first, hey, you know, I'm not that guy. But I know in the area, there's buildings for sale, they've been for sale for a long, long time. They've been for sale for a long, long time. It is a depressed market right now. I don't know what we could get for this building, but this does, I think this, the maps, and I think Brad did it on purpose, really shows not optimal traffic management of any kind. You better be a, a defensive driver when you're in there at certain times. I go there on Saturday mornings, not because I have anything, just it's my social time, but it is pretty light then. But you, you better be careful, you're doing, people are doing packing and they're kind of coming around and doing different things. You don't know what they're going to do or where they're going to go, so. It, it certainly could be better. And, you know, again, selling a building, what does that mean to who? But I, I think it's something we should keep on our radar to make it better. I think we're going to be in this business to a degree. I'm still suffering a little bit from the compost. Getting out of that business, I blame Commissioner Lynch when I talk to people, but.
Among other things.
So, but I, I don't know how we would, I don't know if we have other staff that should be looking at that. Maybe Lambert before he leaves should, I don't know who our, who our in-house Realtor is, but, but, but I, it probably a simple, could we sell this building? Could we get a good deal on another building that would be more optimal? Should be maybe part of the plan, so.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would suggest that that's going to cost some money. It'd be, I think it'd be hard to sell this and come up with something that's as good or better, maybe, unlikely. If you want to accelerate, I think we should revisit our space plan because we have all sorts of space needs.
We do.
And, and we did put on the list here, five to 15 years out. I don't know, is the mental health center, Nick, First Street Center, is that ahead of this or is that in the same bucket?
I think it's ahead of it, according to what I saw in the.
And you talk about problems, look at that building. Have you visited that lately?
Well, what are we talking about there? Are we talking about a tear down and a rebuilding?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, so right now, we're focusing on the Government Center campus here. We did not put a date on the mental health facility at this point, just knowing it's probably at least 10 years out. And the master space plan did not address the ECs, so that's not included right now in our long-term financial plan.
Yeah, so I think we need to plug it in to the plan, but, but you need to be realistic and, and at least plan for money, not to come up with it right away, but, but to have sort of that game plan because of these other needs and prioritize. If the board wants to change that, let's talk about that. But they, they stack up, you know, starting with the government, Government Center, which I think it's going to be five years. I mean, Nick's saying three, but we'll see how it goes. So, anyway, that's my perspective on it.
The 200 plus tons of cardboard there, that's there, right? Not including Victorian Chanhassen?
Yeah, that's correct.
Brad, are the city drop off sites working well?
Commissioner, yes, we've received very extremely good positive feedback, I believe. Commissioner Workman has utilized the, the Chanhassen site and I think it's just really easy to communicate those, those separate sites. We can have more hours, you know, more, you know, opportunity for residents to use those sites. And like I said, we're trying to drive away that material that's not the hazardous waste materials, problem materials and get those away from our sites so we can focus on those really important materials that residents don't have other options to drop off those materials, so.
And Brad, how do the Mayor and Norwood sites work? You said they're not, they still work, the city mayor facilitates those, but then we take the, grab the cardboard? How does that work?
Yeah, Commissioners, so we have a, a grant agreement with the cities, with Cologne, Mayor and Oregon America. We provide them with $5,000 each year to operate the site for their staffing of that site. We ship all the materials out and pay for all that service for the materials.
Okay. And then, I don't know, I just think that having that one day till 7 o'clock, I mean, you could even reduce the hours, but I think just having the one evening till 7 o'clock and stay, keep it 23 instead of extending it to 25 and then cutting off the evening hours, they should have one opportunity to at least go till 7. One other quick question, we've been asked this many times, what about someone has an old culture, a chair or something like that? Where do they get rid of that?
Commissioner, Demcon companies.
That's the only, that's the only option, right?
It's the closest proximity to.
Free on Facebook Marketplace.
They used to have a, a neighbor passed away, so I'm in the process of taking care of all of her stuff for her daughter who now owns the home. She lives in Tampa. But I know that Demcon had at least $100 minimum for you to wheel into their transfer station. So, if you thought the couch was worthless, it's going to cost you a dollar or bucks.
It might be a better idea to get a dumpster at that point, depending on what a dumpster costs.
It's getting expensive too.
Maybe ask the township where they go.
Arrows in the ditches, as a former township supervisor, yeah, you end up picking them up out the ditch.
Mr. Chair, as I'm on our website, I think, maybe, did you, you mentioned the communication, do we have, right in the environmental site, I don't see the, we used to have a pamphlet that went out, it could be a website based too, showing all these locations for compost sites and is that in here? I'm just missing it.
Correct, yeah, Mr. Hamzy, there is probably underneath recycling, there's a separate location for the cardboard sites and the rural recycling sites.
A little hard to find, maybe we can make that easier because I remember the painful compost discussion and bailing out in the Arboretum site and, but part of that was people became more educated on all these available options that are out there, not only compost, but recycling, right?
Correct.
Between private haulers or just driving across the river, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So, anyway, when you're talking to folks, I would refer them there, maybe we could make it stand out more.
Sure.
Well, the Chanhassen, they're open now, I think, or tomorrow. So, maybe Monday, yesterday they were.
Okay.
But I'd buck a bag and I, that's a big pile they got there, so they've taken that, that's a pretty good deal. I think we're probably subsidizing that, aren't we?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. We do, all the different municipal sites, they use the city township grant funding that we provide to operate those programs, so.
Brad, the NYA compost site, we don't supply money for that site, do we, in the industrial park?
Yeah, Commissioner, we do. We, that's part of their, their city grant funding that they receive and they can elect to spend that holiday seat fit as far as, you know, waste reduction, recycling, compost, and they do use a portion of that on, for that site. At, at times they have, they have done some other collections as well.
Okay, because I think if I recall, that was 24/7 and now it's been so abused that they're down to one day.
What do you mean by that?
They throw unwanted things, furniture.
So, it's unmanned?
That was, yep, but there were commercial tree guys that were dropping huge logs and trees in there. It really, maybe reach out to Andrew and she can give you the story, but it's, I think it's down to one day, just a few hours and the residents are pretty upset.
But there, is, do they have a recycling roll off of some sort that is unattended?
Not in NYA.
Because they, they used to, but.
Yeah, they have.
Those are usually a trash heap too.
Yeah, but it's really clean in NYA, it's open on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
But somebody's there.
Yeah, but that's for recycle, not for compost. The leaves and trees and pumpkins and coaches.
What other? If we can go back to the, the new hours, thank you. I think I recall when we, when we had our little visit there, that the proposed hours starting at 10:00 AM, because when I, when we were there, there's quite a line at noon. You know, it, it takes a bit to get in. But I think you recall, Bill, that you, you, people are, your staff is already there at 10:00 AM.
Yes.
So, it's not, it's not going to increase any kind of staff cost?
No.
By opening at 10:00 AM?
No, you're correct, you're correct, Commissioner, the, our proposed hours of operation change will, will result in a no net increase in terms of what we're spending to do this.
Okay, and, and, and I love the consistency because I'm not going to lie, I'm a high user of this facility. And it's like, okay, is it noon, is it 10, is it 11? Like, that was annoying. So, I love the, it's 10:00 AM on the weekdays and, and then 8 to noon. I am one of those that, you know, I'll bust it to get it there at noon on, on, on Saturdays, but I do think whenever you end, you end. What is your communication plan for changing these hours and when is that starting?
Commissioner, I think what we would shoot for is maybe on June 1st, give ourselves plenty of time to give those communication efforts, you know, putting together a postcard and handing it out to our residents. Maybe those residents that are using those, some of those evening hours, make sure we really target those residents as well to make sure that we communicate, you know, signage on site, social media posts, you know, the big communication.
Do, do, I think.
Work with Ari and her team to, to get communication out.
What, is there a possibility, you know, so the big change is Wednesday, not closing at 7, you know? Will there be a transition time where you keep people staffed on, on Wednesdays just in, for a period of time for those people? Like, maybe myself, who would forget that maybe it's closing at 6 or?
Yeah, Commissioner, that's definitely something we could look at, we could just have a few staff available, you know, maybe we have a rotation and have them available if there, there is that need.
Just for that need, yeah, I.
Another, another thing that we've discussed too, Commissioner, is not only kind of helping people by updating our, our website and our hours and all that, but actually identifying who is coming in between 6 and 7. We've seen those, that participation just fall off the table. We're really not seeing that participation during that last hour on Wednesdays and Thursdays. However, if given the opportunity, instead of doing just a mass broadcast, we can tailor our message and figure out who's using that facility and when, and let them know that we're going to go, be going through a schedule change and maybe identify if it is a problem for them. Like Brad said, we've, we've made, in the past, we've opened our doors to people when they're not traditionally open to help them, if they're moving, if there's a death in the family, if their schedule doesn't allow it, so we'd be willing to do that in this case as well.
No, oh, that, that's, that's a beautiful customer service option because that's what we're balancing here, right? The costs with customer service and, and that piece. I mean, this is such an important service that we offer our community and it's absolutely vital and, and I appreciate the work you do and I think the proposed hours make sense and I know for, for me, there aren't a lot of other options to go for this.
And to take on the Bill's comments too, you know, really tailoring it, like Bill said, those people coming in from 6 to 7, let them know, a lot of them just have cardboard. Hey, you can go utilize these other sites. And we did look at who's coming, where they're, where are they coming from for that last hour? Is it from Watertown? Is it, maybe they need that, those evening hours to come in? No, it's generally Chaska, Chanhassen residents, so they're close by the, to the facility.
So, I think people have been so pleased when we've been telling them, they've been rushing in to get in on Saturday, if they're from Chanhassen or Victoria and if they have cardboard, we let them know that there's a site that's open Monday through Friday. You should see the look on their faces. They're so happy that they don't have to wait in that line anymore, that they don't have to wait until Saturday, that they have more of a, of a regular opportunity to drop that material off.
You can do 24 hours a day in Chen, right?
Those aren't the sites, those are the hours that we advertise, but that site is accessible 24, 24 hours.
And, and as far as the building plans, I mean, it, it would be interesting to look at the master space planning. To Commissioner Workman's point, and I always hate to agree with him, but there is, I don't want to miss out on opportunity if there is something that comes up. So, we need to know our plan, have a plan, but also consider being nimble enough to make changes if we see a great opportunity. I don't know if that's going to, but I'm just saying, optimist here.
Mr. Chair, a couple thoughts?
Yes.
We've, you know, it's been on the table for a couple of years and thank you for the work on it and I agree, Bill, when you get there, the customer service, nobody, you would get high ranks if there was a rating, right? When people interact with our staff. I think the 10:00 AM cleans up stuff because there's always confusion around the community. And I also think the 23 hours versus 14 hours also paints a parallel as well. So, in the lens of customer service, I think we're also buying 20 years of time if we do this right, without having to scale back services because of capacity, this, that, the other thing. And, you know, Tom keeps us honest about what, what does the public sector do, what does the private sector do and where are those areas where there's overlap or whatever. In the vein of customer service, I still continue to be a huge advocate for exploring or piloting what it might look like over the course of two years to have shoulder season drop off. I think we're uniquely equipped to handle lawn refuse and the shoulder seasons out of Public Works. I also think that gives us an opportunity to socialize to, to residents that, that that could be a future facility. It is the geographical center. I know it's not the population center and won't be for a few years, but it's a geographical center. And I think I heard, and maybe it was your predecessor Brad that shared this, I think it's something like nine to 12 miles, people are willing to travel at an environmental center. So, Cologne puts it within that nine to 12 miles if we're looking at Chanhassen and Chaska. I think that it's prudent for us as we consider all the land or the, the holdings that we have, not just buildings, but land, if it makes sense for us, if there's an opportunity to be prepared for potentially acquiring land around Public Works for future use. And that's not in the next two or three or four years, but it's in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. That land is only going to go up in price. And so, I would like us to explore a pilot, multi-year pilot to have lawn stuff. And then the last thing is, I've seen other models like this. I was at a mini storage recently and we went there on somebody else's behalf, they gave us a code to get in. And so, we got in, we grabbed the stuff, we left. Maybe it makes sense for at least cardboard and, and, and compost, that if somebody, you know, got online and got a reservation code that they can scan in with cameras there and we don't have to staff that, we can continue to provide service. Minimal cost on technology, high potential impact for the, the services for the county. We're testing something like that in library and I know it's not pound for pound, but it's if you're authorized, if you're good to go, you can scan in and expand it hours and we have, we maximize our service without increasing our costs. So, that might be a consideration for Cologne, it might be a consideration for Chaska to say, okay, what would it look like if in a year or two years we come back and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday are 10 to 6 every single day? And then you're actually there from 10 to whatever and there's the option if somebody comes in after those hours that they could scan in if they had gone onto the portal. So, thinking through the lens of customer service, less through the lens of the operational cost for max impact.
Definitely, yeah. Commissioner, I, I live in Jordan, we, for our organic site, there's a key fob access to access, you have to sign up.
Yep.
And there's cameras there.
Yep.
Yeah, on a smaller scale, but yeah, it's definitely an option.
Thank you.
Well, I think we need to get it rolling.